My husband had a, he had an injury in his back. It was awful. Conservative treatment doesn't work. You always try conservative treatment first?
P fifteen, if we could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It seems weird to be here on a Tuesday evening. But we're all here and happy about it.
Yes, the board of selectmen are downstairs.
Well, they're usually Monday.
I know. Well, Janet said that they, several of them had been away, so they weren't able to get a quorum for Monday.
Our little, we disappeared the screen. I don't know if that's.
Audio's still going, video froze.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open up the meeting with approval of regular session minutes of April ninth, twenty fifteen, and budget and finance minutes of April sixth, twenty fifteen.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll also entertain a motion to accept warrants number forty-two, P fifteen. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, hi Vanessa.
So, we just recently had our Florida trip. We came back on Sunday of last week during April vacation. That was awesome. All the kids, there's no one that couldn't say anything bad, because we all had such a fun time throughout the whole.
Oh, that's great.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, and the chorus performed so well, the band marched really well down Main Street, so that was an awesome experience.
You looked awesome.
Yeah.
The uniforms were really spectacular.
Except when we performed, it was so hot one of the days that it was a little drops there for people.
Well, you said it was like nineties, right?
Yeah, it was, it was very hot.
Oh, and in those band uniforms?
Well, that was. Those aren't the ones.
It was cooler when the band performed luckily, but it was definitely a hot one for us, but.
I didn't have the, I didn't go and see the chorus, but I saw some video that people had taken, and you guys looked great.
Yeah.
The band was, was great for that, even though it's only like two or three minutes, like walking down, it's still like emotion-filled, because it's such a big deal to walk down Main Street and, and, you know, everyone was so proud, and there were tons of parents there, and the uniforms did look great.
The new year uniforms are awesome.
Yeah.
I had, like, all the band students are excited for that. Um, we also had a baseball game last Saturday, and it was against Newburyport for the boys, and they won, so that was awesome to hear.
Oh, good.
And we have a softball and lacrosse game for both boys and girls, or girls softball, but boys and girls lacrosse coming up too. Um, and also, we have, the middle school is doing Kiev, like a little Kiev practice right now, so they have the rock wall in here for them. They've been, I've been seeing them climbing up it throughout, during my lunch. Pretty jealous. And we also have, there's a concert this Thursday. It's gonna be, it's at seven o'clock, and it's for anyone that takes lessons or is in TRIAM, for them to perform just a little solo or duet.
Is that like, they call it a recital?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little recital.
And what does TRIAM stand for, I'm sorry?
So TRIAM is like the three M's, so it's music, I'm not remembering the other two right now. Um, but it's basically like the honors society for music.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and we also have a senior showcase coming up on May seventh, so that's where the senior class will come and perform, and it's supported by the student council.
Oh, that's always a fun night. Are you gonna perform?
I don't know, I'm the emcee for the night. I'll try to be a little funny. So, and then the seniors' last month is coming up, so that's crazy.
Prom is the fifteenth, right?
Yeah, prom is May fifteenth.
Wow, and your last day of school is when?
June first.
June first, wow. That's exciting.
We were hoping they could finish up on the Friday before, but the way the numbers work, it's June first.
What is that, they have to come back on Monday? How many do you think are gonna come back on Monday?
Well.
Let's hope they all do.
We'll be here.
It'll be a fun day.
I think they will, because it's a fun day, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Make it special some.
Well, it's a busy time, I mean, this time of year just flies by.
I know.
It's just so much, you know, exciting stuff, and the warm weather's coming, and, and how are people liking the turf field?
We love the turf field. I'm the manager for the softball team, so them playing on it, they have so much fun. And then the girls and boys lacrosse love it as well. So, and I see the middle school track, like, run around it now, so it's like more of a flat area to run, which is awesome.
That's nice.
Yeah.
It's good, it looks great. Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? Uh, we have all sports boosters, we're having a fundraiser.
Yes.
Wanna come on up?
Hi there Evelyn.
Oh, yeah. You don't mind.
Just so we can hear you.
It's painless.
Yeah.
This is the second time, right, that we're doing this?
Yes, this is the second mattress fundraiser that we have. It's sort of semi-annual. It's been about a year and a half since our last one. We had a fall fundraiser, now we're having it in the spring.
So it had to have been successful then, for you guys to want to do it again?
Yes, we, we raised a total of twenty-six hundred dollars, plus another five hundred dollars in apparel for the kids that they earned through referrals.
Wow, that's cool.
That's significant.
It was, and we shared it with, between boosters and four other teams, field hockey, softball, cheering, and boys lacrosse.
Wow.
Yeah, so, we had a little bit to go around. But it was very successful. It's the best fundraiser that we've, we've had as a boosters team in the last four years. I think the carnival was the only one that I remember that was much bigger.
Oh, and that was so much fun. That was fun.
Yeah, that was when boosters was a bigger organization.
Yeah, it takes a lot to put on a carnival.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The kids loved it.
Not to mention liability and all that stuff now too.
Yes, that's what we were considering too. I'm not sure we ever had liability insurance, but luckily, we didn't have to worry about that. And it was all successful.
And so where are you having it? Is it in the cap?
Yes, we set up, in the cafeteria. And it was, were you there last year?
I did, but this year I'm buying a mattress.
Good.
I need a mattress this year.
It looks really great. I'm gonna put some pictures up from our last event on our Facebook page. It's Georgetown Royals All Sports Boosters, so that people can see what it looks like. It, it's totally transformed. You wouldn't think it, that was our cafeteria.
No.
It's really good.
It's like a showroom, yeah.
It's like Jordan's.
Yep.
So I'm here to request permission to send an email and a flyer to district staff. Uh, the flyer is a special flyer, uh, which is different than the flyer we send to the general public, because district staff will get a hundred dollar discount from the mattresses, from the regular price that they would sell it, whereas the general public can have a, we distribute a fifty dollar discount. So, that's what we'd like to do. I heard that since it's, we're trying to use it, like a school email, district email, to do this, we need school committee approval.
Okay.
And we'll be distributing flyers through the schools in people's mailboxes.
Okay.
And this year, we're holding the mattress sale on May seventeenth with girls lacrosse and softball. And we'll share the proceeds. Do you have any questions?
So, I'm just curious, what, so I'm seeing you have these different flyers here, and these are flyers that are distributed around the school?
Yes.
And to the public?
Uh, the public will get a flyer similar to the one for the district, except that it'll be a fifty dollar discount instead of a hundred.
Okay.
And our.
Are the flyers posted on the walls throughout the school?
No, what we'll be doing is, we'll be sending the flyers to Pembroke and Pearlie schools, and they'll be physical flyers that will be distributed to the kids in their backpacks, the younger grades, that's what they do. And for the high school and middle school, it'll go through the morning announcements.
Okay.
So there won't be a physical flyer.
So, and the announcement is simply the fact of the sale?
The fact of the sale, and then an attachment, you know, similar to.
Well, middle and high school kids get a morning announcement every day to parents.
Right, okay.
So it'll just be like an attachment on it.
I see.
Right.
So you can choose to open it if you want. You don't, it doesn't just appear.
Right, and there'll be, I've put an announcement in the community calendar for the newspaper. I will be putting up flyers or, you know, posters at like local restaurants. And I, last year, I tried to have the pizza places, put it on your pizza box, you know, so it goes out to local people.
So did they do that?
Yes.
That's a great idea.
The other place Evelyn, that you could do is if you just make a quick little PowerPoint slide, just with the details.
Oh, yes.
They'll put it on the community television, and it'll just keep going around and around.
Right.
And a lot of people do watch that, you know?
So it's a PowerPoint slide?
Yeah, that's all really it is, is a PowerPoint slide. I would send it to Janet Pantano in the selectman's office. She'll know what to do with it. It'd be great to, you know, we've had success doing that, so.
Yes, most of it is, is just finding ways to advertise and promote the event around town.
Is that the sole responsibility of the boosters? Or do you get, does the company that does mattresses give you any kind of promotional materials?
They give us, they give us the flyers, and they give us two large banners that are almost the size of this table. One which we put up at the high school, at the parking lot, that fence. And I have permission from the town to put it up by town hall out here at the corner. So I have permission to put it up there, like ten days before the event. Um, I also have lawn signs.
I think I've seen that.
You put all the bases for sure.
Right, exactly, so all the children, athletes that are participating get a lawn sign to put it on their lawn. And last time, I also got permission from Pearlie and Pembroke to put it near their parking areas, just in case, you know, parents didn't get the flyer.
Right.
A lot of parents don't necessarily empty out their kids' backpack on a weekly basis, so, you know, I'm one of those. So that, that's what we do. What else do we do?
So the organization that sponsors this, or whoever you're in contact with, they don't have any contact with teachers?
No.
It's all through you?
Yes, only as, only when there are customers, you know, that were.
Okay.
They will do all of.
That would be at the sale.
They will be doing the selling and handling of any checks and monies, et cetera. And delivering mattresses, or, you know, being at the warehouse when people pick up mattresses. Uh, the only thing that we basically do is advertise. And we don't really handle any money. Kids don't handle any money. The kids are asked to, kids and their parents are asked to talk to family, friends, and neighbors, and just see, you know, is anyone interested in a mattress, and sort of help promote the event that way.
But mattresses can be delivered.
They charge.
Or picked up. Do you know where this warehouse is?
This warehouse is in Lynn.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. I don't think it's that difficult to get to.
Okay.
But delivery is, I heard Jack talk about it, I think it's like sixty dollars for a twin, and then seventy dollars for a queen, and eighty dollars for a king. They'll deliver it to your house and set it up. They'll take your old mattress and put it wherever you want.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, they will not take it away though.
Okay.
No, because the whole thing with bedbugs and, you know, they don't want your, the old mattresses and the new mattresses being in the same place. It's just for hot jeans.
That sounds very reasonable. So is this, are you conducting this primarily the way it's been done in the past, or is there anything different this time about how the sale is being?
No, I believe it's, it'll be exactly the same, except for different teams.
So it's just coming to us because they wanna send it to the staff? So other than that, it's all good to go?
Yes.
Well, I wish you the best of luck with it. I think it's a great idea, it's different. It's always good to get different things in there. And for that much money in one day, that's good.
It is.
Yeah, so I hope you're as successful this year.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the Georgetown Royals All Sports Booster Second Annual Mattress Fundraiser with emails soliciting the faculty and staff at Georgetown Middle High School?
Well, it looks like the whole, she's doing the whole district.
Okay. Okay, so the district-wide staff, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you, good luck.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, so, so we can go to the, I just wanted to comment on just a couple of quick things on the superintendent's information.
Okay.
Okay, so the first one is, I just wanted to include the letter. I don't know if you remember me talking about one of the Girl Scout troop?
Yeah.
Had asked on behalf of the abundant food warehouse.
Food pantry.
Food pantry. About the possibility of, when the Pembroke appliances from the kitchen get distributed, that they were hoping, and so we haven't made any decisions on who gets what, but I just wanted you to, to see that we did acknowledge.
That was a cute letter that they sent.
That was a cute letter that they sent, yeah. Well, you know, I think it's a, you know, anytime I get a letter from any of the kids, you know, I mean, I've been solicited no homework, uniform, wearing uniforms. Every once in a while, the teachers will have some kind of project, you know, persuade somebody of something, and I get letters. So I, so I always write back to them, because I feel like if somebody writes you a letter, then, you know, in life, you should.
Oh, indeed, no matter what their age.
So, and, you know, I told you, I was invited to, a little, a couple of kids invited me to their little classroom and learned to meditate, and I wrote them a letter, you know, a little thank you note, and the kids were so excited to get, because they got mail, you know? So it's, it is just an important thing. So I just wanted you to know that we did respond, and that we'll, you know, we'll do what we can, they're on our list. And then the second one, I just, and I don't, maybe Alana wants to comment on this at some point, but we'd had a conversation about a concern that Alana had raised regarding one of the fundraisers that was going on in some directs, I guess it would be direct advertising or solicitation on the, with a video, as one of the book fair things. So anticipation may be that Alana's gonna say something about that. I did put the policy in.
I was with you.
And I, and I do agree in, in our conversations that, well, the intention is, you know, always positive. I don't think there was any ill intent. There, there really is little doubt probably that it was a violation of the policy, because it, it in fact, you know, it was a third, is a third party, and if you, if you read the policy carefully, it, you know. So it, there is some, for the future, it is, is tricky, because we, you know, we approved it as a fundraiser for PTA, not knowing.
But Carol, you know, I've thought about this.
Not knowing.
Over and over. I mean, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and talking to different people. You didn't know about the video, the principal didn't know about the video, the PTA president and past presidents did not know about the video.
Right.
So this was a decision made independently by a member of the instructional staff at Pembroke School to show that video. And I think, not only is the video in violation, it was not something that the, that came before the school committee to be approved. We don't have to approve instructional.
No.
We're not, it's not our purview, it's to be involved. So this was a decision made by a member of the instructional staff that I think was just a poor decision ultimately. The decision to show advertising to our students with the goal of getting them to buy something, to show a, a marketing video.
Right.
I think was a poor decision. It goes against school policy. It was nothing we had to approve as a school committee, but I, I don't know that it's within, it's, it's up to us to do something about it. And I, I just wanna bring that awareness, I don't know, to you and to others, that, you know, the excuse I heard, or the reason I heard was the kids liked the video. Well, I'm sure the kids would like it if we put sugar in all their meals too, at lunch, and we don't do that.
Right.
And so I think that they're just, it's just the conversation about what constitutes instructional material, and what is okay to use in a classroom.
Right.
And for what purposes? What is your job as a teacher? Your job may be to encourage students to like books, but a marketing video is not about getting the students to like books. It is about getting the students to like the company, on a very subconscious level. And, and that piece is missing from the discussion.
I think, I think the reason, you know, it was like a package deal, right? I mean, that, that's the.
But nobody was aware of that.
I, I understand, I understand. But this was the fir, the person we're, you know, talking about was her first year doing the book fair. She's new, you know, she's new in the position, so I, I think that the reason I wanted to make sure that we put the policy in here, because I think that was, I, I thought that was your hope going forward, is if, if any fundraising group has as part of its materials, a marketing video, then it would, in order to show it, it would need school committee approval.
Absolutely, and so you'll know that I asked, is there anything being distributed to the teaching staff? And the person who's requesting permission says, no, not to her knowledge, right?
Yeah.
So we could ask the PTA next year when they come for approval, is anything being distributed directly to the teaching staff? And as far as the PTA president knows, no. And yet, there's the company sending somebody in the school building a video and saying, show this the week before the book fair. I, I don't know, I, I don't know where, where you intercept that.
Right, that's right. I think that's the question, is, you know, so who, who reviews the materials? Who, who ultimately approves, you know, that, that whatever the book fair materials are, whether it's the distribution of materials, to advertising videos?
Some transparency about what are those materials? And people need to be aware. And if the PTA president who's asking for permission isn't aware that that is part, then there's a problem. I, I would almost vote to, you know, no longer approve fundraisers if we can't trust the people who are asking us for permission to understand what's being done.
Well, I think that's, you know.
It's extreme, I understand that.
It definitely is extreme. I mean, the PTA and all these great organizations do a lot for the schools.
Absolutely.
This is definitely something that happened, and like Carol, the superintendent said, it is an individual that is new. Being the PTA president, Laurine was the PTA president, I can, I can say that the Scholastic Book Fair has been in existence well before I was the president. And I asked my kids after we had the conversation, and they all remember the video.
They all remember the video.
They do remember the video.
The video was being done prior.
Oh, it's probably a long time, that's what you're saying.
Been going on for a long time.
Yeah.
But I don't think it has a place in our schools. I mean, I think that, that's the question is, so how, what do you do when something finds its way into your child's classroom? That is not, that doesn't sit.
Well, I think this particular circumstance will bring that awareness to the people that head up these, these fundraisers now, and just say, okay, you need to, I mean, they have so few fundraisers now.
Right.
That I think it would be easier to control that, and just, you know, and ask.
That's my hope.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I always hoped that I would get the promotional, like, the little brochures that would tell me which books are available, so that my child and I could sit and look at them and say.
We used to get those.
And I could say, yeah, right, you know, which ones would you like, which ones would you not like would be, just so we have an idea going in. I mean, that's another kind of promotional material that is sent, but I find it useful. It's useful, but you as a parent also have an opportunity to engage with your child around this. When it's, when a, when a commercial essentially is shown at school, and you don't know that it's being shown to your child, you have no opportunity to engage with your child around it.
It sounds like there needs to be sort of an outreach to anyone that does fundraisers, whether it's the boosters, whether it's the GEF, whether it's the PTA that says, there needs to be a due diligence portion. When you bring a company in, these are the four things you're gonna do. We have a checklist, you know, is there gonna be a flyer, is there gonna be a video? And there needs to just be some type of communication. I think it's just awareness.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think it's just awareness and having a due diligence step in the process. I don't know that videos and commercials are all that common. I mean, I ran a lot of fundraisers, I'll tell you, probably too many.
In fact, can you think of any other example?
I don't, I, I can't. I actually cannot think of any.
Well, this is a company that has a history of sneaking things into schools with a political agenda.
Well, well, this is the thing, it sounds like a really unique situation.
I hope, that's my hope. I hope it is a unique situation, and so I hope it's one that by now that we have the awareness, we could, we could be mindful of it.
Yeah. Normally, they run a second Scholastic Book Fair during the school year. Do we know if that's being done, or have you talked to Jill?
Usually, the school runs one.
And there's another one in the, in the spring. Do you know, do you know Margaret?
You're putting me on the spot, my memory problem is, I.
And is it, is it the one in the fall where you, you get half price on one if you buy one? And one of them, the.
The PTA benefits.
Right.
And the other one.
Right, the second one.
The first one is the one, the PTA. The PTA benefits, and the second one, it's more of a deal for the kids, because they get a, a second book free, or half price.
I don't know. One is for the PTA and one is for the school. So there is normally two a year, so, okay.
But fundraisers like the wallpaper and the Yankee candle and all that, that didn't have a video with it, did it?
No.
No.
Cookies, pies.
Cookie dough, pies.
I don't think there's any other video.
Butter breads.
The one, no. I think this is the only one, I guess.
Well, we can look, we can also look at the policy and governance too, to see if we can't tighten some of that language up as well.
But Carol, this, and this was my whole point of coming to you, was, you know, we have, and this was the question I asked when I was on government, we have all these policies, but what good are they if the people who teach in our schools don't know them or don't adhere to them?
Well.
I mean, that's, that's the question, and then whose responsibility is it to make sure that the policies are enforced, particularly amongst the faculty?
You know, I, I think that's, it's the administration, you know, all of us. But again, you know, this, this was something that was raised for the first time, so, you know, obviously, it's been going on, so.
It's been a tradition. That's even, that's even what is more frustrating about it. It's been going on behind everybody's back.
Well, I think, I think the other thing, we, I mean, again, we can debate this. I think the one thing, it bothers some people, and then other people, it doesn't bother. So it really depends on what your threshold is. This bothers you, understandably so. But there are also a lot of people who say, my kid loves the video, and I think it's great that he's, he or she's excited about books as a result of it. So it depends on the perspective that you hold. If as a district, we say, we don't support it, then absolutely, before we, before we agree to any fundraisers, a checklist or some kind of due diligence that says, these are the things that we ask and that we review. And if there is a promotional video, we don't allow it to be shown.
So I think in the contract too, every fundraiser has, you know, even if it's a two-page or it has a contract.
Right.
And usually, two things that will tell you is if there is marketing materials.
Yeah.
But also, if they can sort of post pitches, like sometimes they'll come to an event.
Yep.
If they can post pitches, and you have to sign off on those things, so.
So I think it's great to raise the awareness, and, you know, like I said, I, I think, you know, we can, we can definitely tighten this up. And I think, you know, before we agree to any fundraisers, we need to ask the questions.
I think there's also a fine line between the, the videos. I recall videos being shown in the library that, that highlighted certain authors, and so, you know, talked about different books, and the author's experience writing the books, and, you know, so there are other. That is a piece of the video. Purely educational, not, you know, videos on teaching the, the children about specific authors. And then this video, I imagine, would seem to be, on the surface of things, kind of similar.
That's the problem, it's subtle.
Right. It's a very subtle. But. Marketing is very subtle. Marketers are very savvy. And, yeah, but because of that subtlety, I can understand why it wouldn't occur to people that, oh.
But this is marketing, right?
It's different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially when you, you know, supposedly, you know, people like the video. I mean, I, like I said, I, I personally, you know, saw some of it and didn't really, didn't really turn me on. But, you know, I, I do understand the, the issue, and I think we just have to be more vigilant about it. I mean, it's, school districts go through this. Have you ever heard of Channel One, you know, which is a, a thing that a lot of schools show first part, first part of the day? And, and there's always a lot of discussion about that, you know, kind of like, oh, so there's a lot of advertising that goes on there? Or people, some places allow advertising on their website, you know? So some people allow advertising on the tests that they give. I mean, it can get crazy, you know?
There is, there is a whole body of literature about, that addresses why advertising is to children is so detrimental to them.
Yeah.
And I can't help but think that that literature, you know, it, to me, it feels like, wow, there's a whole generation between me and my, my child who are victims of the advertising they were exposed to. The advertisers succeeded with them, so that they no longer see the danger in advertising to children. Oh, that's what I, that's, that's how I'm seeing this, and I, I find it, you know, again, advertising is based on psychology, and we know a lot more also now about the brain and how the brain works. And people who develop those kinds of videos, they know exactly what they're doing. And you're taking a, a child's experience of school, where everything that happens in school is supposed to be for your benefit, and you're telling them that this is also for your benefit. Just look at the screen and do what the screen tells you to do. That the screen is right. Just look at the screen and do what the screen tells you to do, that the screen is right. And we can't raise a, 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 a generation that will be critically involved in, in the governing of their, of their country if they are, have been conditioned to believe what they see on screens.
Yeah. Well, and there's, I mean, there's also a, an important lesson in learning to be discrimi, just to be able to discriminate as, as kids get older, as to, you know, what is it I'm gonna be persuaded by and what isn't I'm not, but, but there's.
Showing that video in high school and asking, what is that, what are the advertisers doing here? How, how is this being used to suck you in? Great use of the video. But to second, third, fourth graders, fifth graders, no, they don't have that level of sophistication. So what they see on the screen at school and what they see on the screen at home or in the movie theater, no difference.
Yeah.
If it's good at school, it's good at home.
Yeah. Well, I, I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause I know it was something that was very concerning to you, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to talk about it, and it, and it does raise all of our level of awareness. So, and we are definitely, you know, going to be, uh, you know, more judicious about that.
So when you meet with Jill, you usually meet with Jill before she comes here, does, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, well, and I think, again, we, we'd get it out to all the groups, the information to the groups, but as, as you pointed out, there's, there's really not a lot, I mean, this, this is a one issue, but, you know, the whole issue of indoctrination and advertising and all that is societal issue, right? I mean, so we, we need to just be guarding against it in, in whatever we do in schools, for sure. But, um, you know, I think in terms of just taking the fundraising situation, it sounds like that's, it's not that difficult, given the fact that there's not that many that this happens with. Um, but we will, we will examine the promotional materials to make sure that, um, and as Pam said, to give parents the opportunity, as you pointed out, if there's no evening for parents to come in and look at books with their children, then, you know, it is difficult as a parent to just fill out the paper at home, or just hand your child twenty dollars and say, go buy a book, you know? So there are, there are, there's always ways to improve things when they're, when they're raised as an issue. So, I do thank you for bringing the issue up.
And we can check on that, one that possibly could be coming up, if there is a, a second.
Other books, although, but you think there'd be a book fair at this time of the year?
It usually is, it's usually, it's usually May.
Oh, it is usually May, okay.
Or early June.
Yeah, it's, it's at the end of the school.
And honestly, you know, thinking about it, if the video wasn't shown, it's not like kids wouldn't buy the books or go to the book fair, so, you know, you have to think about, I understand why it just becomes, as you said, a kind of like part of the package deal, it doesn't mean that we have to take advantage of every part of the package.
Yeah, I do remember though, that parents used to send me, would send me, um, either a note or an email saying, I don't want my child to go to the book fair.
Yeah.
So then we'd make arrangements with the teacher.
Okay.
So there were some parents that opted out.
Yeah.
As a class, they didn't want their child to go.
Well, you know, it is difficult, I mean, if they don't really know what's available, and, you know, you don't want your child to take twenty dollars and maybe buy bookmarks or, 'cause there are some things there that aren't books.
Right.
And that's another, you know, that's another question, right? Okay, well, thank you, I just wanted to draw your attention to that.
Okay, um, we want to do the school calendar approval first, before the, the subcommittee? Do we want to talk about that?
Sure.
Uh, I know last time I didn't have an opportunity to really take a look at the, um, school calendar. Did anybody have any questions about it? I put all the dates already in my calendar.
Did you? She figures it's easier to move one or two dates.
Right, I think we've worked on this for a little while.
Well, the school calendar is not easy, because obviously, you, you wanna, there's a few, there's a few moving balls, right? You wanna get out, you know, at a reasonable time, you wanna have, you know, um, full weeks of school where you can. You have to worry about the professional development, and how, how do you make sure there's enough time for that? Of course, there's the before and after Labor Day discussion that always is interesting, and, um, you know, the vacations fall different times, so you have to pay attention to that. Um, and, and we're trying to, in the interest of working with the community, we're trying to work around election days. And I, I would tell you that the days we have for full D P D are not optimal for us in terms, but they work for the community, and so we're trying to meet more than one. Because it is very difficult when you, especially when you have like a presidential primary, where you expect a fairly large turnout, you know? Um, this year, I, next year, where the school is, the way the school is laid out, I think the security issues become less concerning. Um, because we literally can isolate that, that section, there's an actual entrance that's different than the main entrance. So that, that eliminate, will eliminate some of the concerns that have been there in the past, but still mixing, you know, the public with the children, you know, and if we can avoid doing that, we, we'd like to.
Well, the, the, um, survey that you included in there was very interesting. It was very interesting, because it just goes to show, it's not an easy decision for any, any district.
No.
And there's so many, um, there, there were so many different, um, concerns in there, and, you know, the, the comments at the back, so it was interesting.
Yeah.
And I did think it was interesting about the, of many of them consolidating into a March vacation.
Yeah, I didn't think that was very popular, but maybe I didn't read that.
But I, well, but it, what, one individual had said is, but all districts need to do it, and I agree with that. It would be hard for.
Oh, yes.
It would be like a, it would have to be like a statewide thing or something.
Yeah.
Thank you for including that.
Yeah, you're welcome, I, I knew, yeah, I thought you might enjoy it, especially given the construct of the discussion about the.
Particularly for faculty members who have children in other districts than, than we had.
Some people like it because if they're going to, on a vacation, they, the flights are a little better, although, although not really. They're not, not really, because the colleges and the private schools are, yeah, in March, so, you know, that's not necessarily a, you have to go on a completely different week and.
Right, March is the college spring break.
Yeah.
And I would think people might want to avoid that, who don't have college students.
Right, they might. Now, the, the reasons we, uh, somebody had mentioned it in here too, about having P D days before the school year.
Yeah.
So tell me a little bit about that.
Um, well, um, some places do that, they have all of the days beforehand, um, and we, we have never, it depends on what you wanna do, in, in terms of the content. Some years, depending on what you're going to work on, it makes sense to front-load everything, but when you put three or four days in a row, and then you have multiple things going on, and then the school year starts, you don't have an opportunity to really reflect on it, you don't have an opportunity to go back and, you know, deepen your understanding. Like, when we did the teacher evaluation, right, the first thing we did the first day of school is we gave the, the overview of the five-step process, and we started with the teacher self-evaluation. Then we moved into the goal setting, you know, we moved into the next stages, then we moved into the next stages, and now we're ready to, which in the next meeting I'll come, we'll come and talk about staff and student surveys, 'cause that's our last, our last segment. So in, in a year where you're introducing things and then you're practicing, so you introduce teacher self-evaluation, and then you give them time to work on their self-evaluation before they have to do the goal-setting part. If you're doing something that, you know, you could do it all at one point, and then throughout the year, there's ways to reinforce it, then you wouldn't necessarily have to have days during the year. But that's what we have always found, that having them throughout the year gives an opportunity for practice and reflection, and you know, a way to deepen the, the understanding of, of what you're doing. Um, Julie, did you, did you or Margaret want to comment, or Peter?
No, that's exactly what I would have said.
Have you ever worked in a place where they've had all at one?
Not all at once. I've worked where they, there have been a couple days before, but then there are still days through the year. So there might be full days to, you know, get that initial training, but then, as you say, you have to reflect on it, we get, see how it's going.
At the beginning, Leah, we do build in mentoring days for teachers over the summer for new hires and things like that, so we can work with teachers before they get into the classroom and.
Yeah, there's two days of mentor training.
But, um, for the most part, I've always worked in a place where it's throughout the year.
Mike, do you have any thoughts on that? Like, would you, teachers going before, like, the P D days before? Which would mean coming like the last week in August?
I think, I think you'd have to sit down and, and weigh the, the positives and negatives. I mean, I think there are a number of people, um, parents and teachers alike, who, um, don't necessarily wanna be in school, regardless of snow days till the end of June.
Right.
And if this was something that could prevent that from happening, um, then some people would probably entertain the possibility. Uh, I think ultimately, to speak on behalf of teachers, it would have to be, um, what's presented and how meaningful is it? I mean, if, if it's something that's meaningful and it's worth the time, I would say absolutely. Um, if it was, you know, uh, maybe something that was kind of rehashed from the past, or maybe, you know, beneficial to some but not beneficial to all, um, there may be some reluctance.
Right, right. So I think it's a discussion, depending on the, the year, and certainly, um, there's nothing that says, you know, we can't, uh, continue to revisit that with the teachers' union, you know, in terms of, you know, if we were to have days before or day, days after are tough, because it's kind of like, yeah. Um, but even days before are tough, because you have some teachers who, they'd have to know in advance, because there are some teachers who, who do work in the summer. Right, I mean, Labor Day means for them, you know, the, the last day of work, you know? Um, people vacation, you know how hard it is to talk about, you know, going with a definite before Labor Day start? So, you know, I, I just think for the, for right now, this is the model that we feel works, but I wouldn't rule anything out for the, for the future. I just do think that how we learn best is over time. And, uh, you know, it's not always, you know, like, for example, if Wes were to do training in, uh, which he has to do, um, that's why we need a date in September, and we're using some of the first day of school at the high school, but like, he's introducing new technology, um, things, because we have new devices, right? So we have one-to-one in fifth and sixth grade, we wanna make sure the teachers are all very comfortable with that. If you were gonna have before-school trainings, that might make sense to do. You, you'd still have to find ways over the course of the year to make that learning, reinforce that learning, and if people had questions, how would they go to people? But that's an example of something that you wanna have it at the, maybe at the beginning of the year, because it's something that they're going to use right away. Or if you were starting up a new math program, that you really wanted to give teachers an opportunity to really get experience with, what are the elements of the math program? You might do something upfront, and then, but it still doesn't negate the need to do things throughout the year um, in terms of professional development. You just have to figure out, if you don't have days designated for it, then you have to figure out after-school time, which you can't require people necessarily to attend, you know, it's not, it's not easy either way. So that's why we've, we've chosen to go in this direction, and because we're going before Labor Day, we found that June, we felt that June seventeenth was a more reasonable day to get out.
It is, but living where we are, how.
Oh, we're bound to have a nice winter, next winter. We can't do two of these in a row. That can't happen. We're not allowing it. The power of positive thinking. That's right. Um, but anyway, Barbie, you know, I think it's a, it's a discussion that a lot of places have. There are some places that have no full-day P Ds, they do all half-days.
Yeah, like Hamilton.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
They've been doing that for, for such a long time, too.
A place out, out home. Out west, they just approved, um, every Friday is a P D day. Um, so every Friday afternoon, kid, every Friday afternoon, students are released, and teachers have professional development, you know, different kinds of meetings. When I was a teacher in Greenfield, we had every Wednesday afternoon. And I would tell you that I, I didn't necessarily, I thought that was overkill for one thing, and I thought it really disrupted the instructional week, because on Wednesday, Wednesday wasn't like a real day.
Week, right, yeah.
Wasn't like a real day, there was only certain things you could do on Wednesdays. Um, so, you know, obviously, the goal is to try to be as least disruptive, and at the same time, you're balancing, again, some things, you know, you could have an early release day, and you could work on them in the afternoon, and because it's not necessarily new learning, it works well to have the two hours or three hours, depending on what we work out with the union, to actually work on something. Other topics, it really, you really need a full day, because by the time somebody literally sits down to start working on it, you know, and you, you pick up and move on, it's really kind of a waste of time, like, why bother? Right, so, again, it's, one size does not necessarily fit all.
No, and I, I do also see a lot of discussion about later start times.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you mean, what do you mean late?
Uh, in the day, during the day, you know, to start.
Oh, like delay?
You know, eight o'clock or after. That's, that seems to be.
Some places do that, they come in late.
Yeah.
For P D. They don't go home late, they come in late.
No, I'm saying for the students.
Oh, you mean high school?
As an issue separate from middle high school.
Oh, that's a different issue, yeah.
But, but that just seems to be like, lately, I've been hearing a lot of, just on social media and stuff, a lot, you know, people saying that it's just not effective for kids at that age to be up that early, their brains aren't really working yet, and if they are gonna start that early, to not put the major subjects as their first period.
The pendulum swings all over the place, folks, I, we've been doing this for thirty years, you know? I mean, I, I might have heard that five times in my career, you know, it just really depends on what gets the, what gets the hook, you know? If, I, Vanessa, what do you think about kids go, high school kids going to school late, like eight, eight-thirty?
Well, I know, some people would definitely enjoy that, but my A blocks, I tend to do best in, 'cause I'm waking up to what I'm doing, so that's like a weird thing for me, but it'd be nice to sleep in a few extra hours and stay up late doing homework.
So, I mean, that's an issue, obviously, the committee could decide to take on, but, um, I don't know, it's, you know, we just have to, I think we just have to always be mindful of good practice and, and, um, but we have to be careful, you know, that the pendulum doesn't swing too much, because then we, we sort of lose track, lose focus, you know, on, on what we're doing, right? There's pros and cons on any.
But I also think that just because you've been doing things online, doesn't mean it's the right way to do it either.
Oh, I agree, but I, I think there's an awful lot of things that, you know.
You have to weigh the pros and cons.
It does depend, right.
Sometimes it's easy to not be so aware of the pros of the status quo. I mean, you know, like, sports practices, all the things the kids do after school, going, working.
But I agree, that, no, I mean, you should always, and value, extend, you know, think about all of the angles, but, but we just have to be careful, 'cause you can find research for anything.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
So if it, if it really is something that we study, and it really looks like something, you know, we should consider, then certainly, I think, you know, we, we wanna evaluate that.
Then there's the bus contracts and the bus.
Yeah, there's lots of, there's always nuances, right, that you don't know about.
From what I understand, if, if we change the hours for the high school, that would be flipping it, and the elementary school parents. Well, students, teachers.
If you wanted to study it, we, we would have to do a really good. We have to do a really good study. It's not as simple as, that sounds like a good idea.
It's not something.
You have to really.
See academic improvement, right?
Right.
If you were gonna start later, but then you wonder, is there, is there another subset of the students that would do more poorly? Because they're, they're later in the day, and they're now getting tired. I don't know.
And would it, would it increase, what, what would be the goal? It, would it increase, would kids go to bed earlier? If, you know, I, I don't know, you know, I think there's, it, it's an interesting study, but if we wanna talk about it, we really should, you know, get a, a committee together and really study it, before we made a decision to go there.
Okay, did anybody have any questions about the, the calendar? Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, thank you, we'll get that posted right up on the website, 'cause we do have a lot of people who are asking about it.
I'm sure they are.
Yeah. Okay, uh, subcommittee reports. Uh, budget and finance.
No, not since the, the last meeting, and I don't know that much has changed.
Right. No, I mean, just, no, we made the reductions here, right? So, at this point, I think, just waiting, you know, town meeting's coming up.
Right.
But, but we should, um, you know, we should meet again, because we, I think we should go over, you know, the things that, the other things we were studying, we were looking at, like, you know, revenue for the preschool.
Right.
You know, um, what we wanna do, if anything, to get ready to study the faculty daycare, like, what information would we have to get? And then Michael wanted to talk about, uh, some long-term strategies for, um, you know,
For budgeting.
Budgeting, so, maybe, you know, we, we should get a, another meeting. So maybe, you know, we, we should get a, another meeting, just to talk about those things, yeah.
Well, there will be a reorg, the next school committee meeting, so I don't know if that's gonna be changing up the, um.
Yeah.
The school committees.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, that's, yeah, that's true.
Um, uh governance.
We have not met. Our last two meetings were bumped up to other meetings. We need to get one on the calendar.
Okay.
Get caught up.
Cause that concussion policy is important. And we basically know what we wanna do. We just have to do it. Um there are just some suggestions that we um talked with Chris DiFranco about and he agreed that that would make sense. And then we'll put it together and then present it to the school committee. And then um, that Wednesday night, actually just speaking of concussions, there is an information session at six-thirty. And uh doctors and, and other experts from Leahy Clinic with whom we're partnering, partnering, uh will be.
Where is it, Pam?
It's at the middle high school, six-thirty.
The auditorium?
Yep. And I, I think it'll be fascinating because there's so much new in the field and I think so much is going to change as a result of our partnership with Leahy.
Mm-hmm.
Um in, in a very good way, in, in the way we're doing the impact testing and the way, you know, training and responding and helmets. They're gonna be giving us free helmets and we'll learn about those and a lot of good.
Yeah, I hope six-thirty tomorrow.
Yeah, I hope a lot of people come.
I do.
Pam's done a good job getting out on the social, you know, media and, um, you know, the morning announcements has had it several times, so.
And we just want our policy to be, you know, consistent with
Right.
the way they do it. And we want what they're doing to be consistent with what we want them to be, which that will all happen through its partnership, so.
Is the company that donated the helmets going to be present at the meeting?
Um.
Yeah, so manufacturer, yeah.
Yeah.
The manufacturer of the helmets?
Not, not the manufacturer.
So Leahy.
Leahy who will be donating the helmets.
And they'll have physicians and everything?
So maybe a quick check on anything they're showing? I don't know.
Oh.
This seems to be a hot topic.
If there's a video or anything.
But it's out of school. It's to parents.
It's to parents.
I would guess that there will be a video. Oh, that's a good question. Maybe I should get in touch with it.
I wouldn't necessarily think.
Well, if it's, if it's not to the students, they're not, if they're not gonna see it.
Right.
I guess.
Well, it is for the students. It, it, I mean, it is.
No, but it's outside of the school.
Right, but it's for students, parents, anybody in the community who's interested in, you know, concussions and.
Yeah, I think it's more informational than marketing, you know, I mean, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's nothing to market. There's nothing to buy.
It's all, they're providing helmets for us through a donation, yeah.
Right.
There's nothing in return, right?
No, no.
Okay, well, that's good. Six-thirty tomorrow night. Um, in negotiations, um we have met and we also have a meeting scheduled for Monday. Alana and I, um.
May fourth, right?
May fourth, yeah. Public relations.
Tomorrow morning, yes, nine, nine o'clock. And we're going to be discussing um the district satisfaction survey and getting that going. The Speak Up Tool and the status of, of that. Um talking about new website development plans and directions for that, that might begin over the summer, hopefully.
The our website, the school website?
The district website, yes. Yes, it is. It's all, it's all good. I mean, we've come a long, long way, but there's more to do.
Always.
Always. As there should be, that's natural, continual improvement. Um and then we had talked about a communications plan that would just summarize for people who are interested in it, you know, the, the, the policies and the directions and um how, how the school district intends to, you know, communicate with the public. Information two-way, sharing what we know and, and inviting the public to communicate with us. Um and as part of that, there's, we had thought about a communications directory. So I thought we might discuss that at the meeting tomorrow, too.
I get a busy, busy agenda.
Yeah, we might not get to all of those things.
Four things. Good luck talking about.
Good luck with that.
I'm interested to hear how a lot of folks, good? I know the last safety meeting, you already went to your last one.
Yeah.
She didn't even get to report.
I didn't read, report. It was a good meeting.
The school building, I know you all. Well, I know you had the op, had the opportunity to go check out the tour of the new school. How did that go last week?
That was fabulous.
Yeah.
That was, did, did you enjoy that?
I did.
No. I felt a little bit bad for Peter. Peter, you were there, weren't you?
Peter came.
It just kind of.
Envious.
He was just gonna look great.
He was a really good sport about it, though.
Reminded me, I hope it reminds all of us how important it is to do a really good quality job on the middle high school and get, um, you know, everything they need, all the renovations with the best of everyone's ability. And, and the, the school will be beautiful, not quite as beautiful as the Penbrook, but it will look a lot better than it does now. Work is.
Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad.
Cafeteria store is done now, though. All the flooring is now done.
In the, at the Penbrook?
At the Penbrook.
And um the teachers are going in Friday and Monday?
Yes, Friday and Monday.
Wow, they must be so excited.
Friday morning and Monday afternoon.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
That's, that's exciting for them.
It is, yeah.
Yeah. Cause that must be hard.
Well, part of what they're, what their interest is in seeing how much space they have because not really space as much as storage space.
Oh.
Because they have to determine, you know, what they can bring, right, exactly.
Teachers accumulate a lot.
They do. Trust me, my basement is full of stuff that I'm somehow gonna use someday.
Well, that's exciting for them. I mean, so how are you gonna get them all to go over? You're gonna have like some in the morning, so then.
Well, I, I just put it out there. I said there's no RSVP, you know, being in front of the school at either, you know, seven-thirty.
Oh, so it's before the school day?
Well, there's both.
Friday is before the school day and then Monday will be at three.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know, I thought it was during the day. No, 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 during the school day. Oh, that's a good idea. We did discuss that, like, you know, as teachers have prep time, they can come there, but you know what?
Oh, that's good.
You know, then, then it really, they gotta get back. It's, you know, they'd have to really have somebody there the whole time. So this way, and it's fun to go with other people, I think, too, you know. So that's what we decided. And if we need to do more, then we'll do more.
And do they have all their rooms?
Yeah, we did. We did our lottery, so everybody knows what room they're assigned to, so they can go check that out.
So we'll, we'll have a couple people, you know, to help Wes volunteer.
Yeah.
Just because if, you know, if we get forty people, maybe have a couple groups and just like a tour. You know, you go that direction, we'll go there, go find your room and then kind of just explore it for a little bit.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah. They've been very patient, but it, it wasn't the right time. Now, now it, everything is, you know, pretty much in the shape. Obviously, a little bit more cleaning done and all that, but they'll be able to get a real feel for, you know, for the school, so.
The school, yeah.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
And if any of you that haven't, didn't, weren't able to come to the tour, if you want to have a tour, just let us know because we can easily take you through. It's easy and all, um during the day, easy. So just let us know and we can take you by.
Okay. What else is going on with the school?
Um so the, the building committee voted to approve a fire alarm radio repeater system, um which is, it's mandatory by code and it's gonna be life-saving to tran, able transmit signals to the firehouse from the, the schools. Um so that was, that was a vote. Um the contractor is still on Penbrook, still on Penbrook, ahead of schedule and continues to be under budget with the underbid savings of one million, six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars.
That's good.
Which is very good. Um, yeah. So, and we discussed the, the middle high school. Um the project funding agreement was signed by the town and the state. The contractor began work on the gymnasium last week. Uh how did that go, Peter? Is everything, is work, has it really begun, I mean, has significant work begun that you?
I don't know. I'm not really loud in there.
I know, I asked the kids and they're like.
I met the new clerk of works and he seems nice and the trailers are there and they have, have a petition, but really can't go in there.
Well, hopefully that's for a reason. That, hopefully that's for safety reasons because there's.
Yeah, I don't think, um, they're, they're doing too much right now. I think they're getting ready to demolish.
Demolish.
Taking the bleachers just, uh, taking a closet out.
In some of the uh HVAC, the big HVAC units.
Yeah.
Okay.
And uh one of the closets.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then they're gonna paint, you know, they're done, they're gonna paint the whole thing and reposition the floor.
It's gonna look great.
Yeah, but you really wouldn't know they were even there.
Good.
So.
Yeah. So that's, that's good in some ways, as long as they're actually like working.
Just pray for no rain so the kids can be outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need some better weather.
We need some better weather. I agree.
And that, and that gym won't be finished until August thirty-first.
That's the day, wow.
That, that's the, the target date to finish.
It's the summer project, too.
Wow, it's right to the.
The gym. Right, and so, and yeah, so phase, that, the gym is called Phase One and it includes the, the roof above the gym.
Yeah.
Then Phase Two, which is the majority of the work, will begin on July seventh, ending on August thirty-first. And then Phase Three, the, um, is the extended period for the corridor, um, and the chorus room and, and the first floor. And that'll begin on July seventh, ending October thirty-first. Okay.
Okay.
Um and our current underbid saving stands at five hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which includes an owner's contingency of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is good for the, the scope of the whole project is seven million, eight hundred, five thousand dollars. So that's where we're at.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah, very exciting.
Okay, um, all right, now we are uh moving along to the school committee self-evaluation that you all immersed yourselves in, in the last couple of weeks. Um.
Yes.
Thanks to Laura for putting everything together, consolidating it for an easy read. Um, so what I found to be, um, very good about the self-evaluation for the school committee is that under member relations and committee superintendent relations, both were strongly agree.
Yeah, I liked that, appreciated that.
Which to me is very important because that basically uh is saying that we all feel the same way about each other. We respect each other, uh we share pertinent information with each other. We all do our homework. We all come prepared to sit down and discuss what's on the agenda as well as the relationship that we feel we have with the superintendent. Um the frequency of communications, the open communication, the um respect between us, professionalism. Um so I was really happy with that.
That was true.
Um.
And that we all feel that we operate on a no surprises model. That's very important.
It is.
You had all ones on that.
If there's, if.
I thought that was really.
Seen an important issue which should be brought out in the open and discussed.
Right.
Great.
The, uh.
Thank you, Alana.
I did wanna bring up, um, I think what has come up, um, in the last couple of years is under, where the committee members take part in educational workshops and conferences. Um so that got three out of the five of us disagreed, that that did not happen. Um and I don't know if it, whose fault that, like, if there is anyone's fault, whether it's just timing or, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could do like la, um, was it last year or the year before? Two years ago that we did a workshop, the school committee, uh the superintendent.
Oh, with Mike Gilbert?
Right.
Yes, yeah.
With the MASC rep and we had a great day.
I really enjoyed that.
We did.
I found it very helpful.
That was very helpful. So maybe that is something that, um, we can think about doing again. Um.
Lauren, were you on the committee at that point?
Yes.
Yeah. Did you find that to be helpful or enjoyable?
Um, when we went to the.
Yeah, it was enjoyable. I thought it was somewhat helpful. I actually thought the, um, I'm forgetting the name. Laura, what did I go to last year?
Charting the course.
Yeah, charting the course.
I actually thought that was pretty amazing.
Yes.
For a new member and I wished I had done that sooner.
Yeah, I also, I, I went in my second year.
You just learned so much.
You did.
But they really need to make the locations better.
Yeah, the timing, too.
Well, and that's, and that was, I think, one of the challenges. Um, not that our meeting wasn't good.
Yeah.
It was just, that was more targeted. I needed the workshop first.
Right.
And then that meeting would have been more helpful.
And I think the other thing that you could think about is, I know, Michael, you went to the joint conference, right?
I did, yeah.
So MAS, it'd be finding, just finding out from MASC what they offer, right? And then you could determine, cause I know there's Day on the Hill is coming up, you know.
April.
So I think that's what this is probably getting at, you know, is that what, what you can find available, you know, um for school committees, you know, is out there. MAS, just like MSS has a ti, way more workshops than I could ever go to.
I wonder if it would be useful to get a list from the MAS to present it to the committee? Cause you know, to get something in my email a month before it's happening and say, oh, look, this event is coming up.
You can't plan it, yeah.
It's, it's very hard that way, but if I knew, had I known, you know, a certain amount of time in advance, oh, over the course of the year, there will be this, this, or this offered that's available to a school committee member, then you could plan perhaps to attend and, you know.
Well, we could definitely, you know, reach out in an email to Mike and just say the committee's really interested in having a goal of, you know, ex, accessing some additional workshops that you might be offering. Do you have a yearly plan? You know, so that we could make that aware.
Yeah, there probably is on the Wes, the website, I would guess. I don't know.
You might just be able to take it and just distribute it so that we're all more aware of it rather than.
Is it on the website, Mike?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, for me, I know part of it is getting to Chumsford at seven-thirty on a Tuesday just isn't the most convenient thing in the world.
Easy thing to do.
Yeah. I mean, even, even if you know, even if you know three months in advance, it's a, it's a tricky.
Yeah. But it, it is hard to, you know, find time. I mean, there are other workshops, too. Like I went to the school safety workshop given by the district attorney's office, which was very interesting on um teen, teen dating violence and uh drugs in society. By, at Marymount College I just went to, which, you know, talked about.
I guess there's the.
Current trends and, and how to.
But making you aware of what opportunities might be coming by, coming around is something we could try to work a little bit more on.
It's also sort of an impetus to, to share. I know after the MASC one, I, I think you asked how it was and, and while I don't necessarily know what I would have shared, I think there was an, there is an opportunity to, to, you know, whether it's kind of an in-email summary or, or to talk about it here, substantively what it was about rather than, I went to this meeting that was good.
Mm-hmm.
But I kinda like the summer get-together because it, it's a good time to try to envision our goals for the year ahead.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, think about what's important, what's been working for the district and, and, you know, for us as a committee. And how would we really like to, you know, as you say, continually improve and, you know, just.
It's just, it's a time to catch your breath if you're around.
And, and, and think about, you know, what we'd like to do.
It's the beginning of the year.
Going forward, yes.
Yeah. The other thing that, that I think is important, sort of full disclosure here. I answered this question actually, not based on my own personal experience.
Yeah.
Because of my work schedule and I travel.
Yes.
It's very hard for me to attend some of these things.
Right.
I actually answered it based on what I thought the committee did, not me personally.
Okay.
So just to be clear, I think as a committee, we can all do more.
On the one about workshops, you're saying?
About education.
Yeah.
But I, I think many do quite a bit. I'm, I just don't put myself in that population. It just has been challenging.
Yeah.
That's why I rated it the way I did.
Um the other one, too, is, um, new members receive intro, introductory training. And that is, that is, I felt, I felt that when I came on. I'm sure everybody did because you, you get elected and then you go and you do, uh, you know, you're swearing in and you come to a meeting and you're talking about things that, you know, have already been discussed and, um, I, I, I definitely think that there could be a better way of doing it other than Michael and I sitting at Dunkin' Donuts.
It was a very good conversation.
Although, that's what I, when I first got on the committee, too, I, I asked to talk to people. We spoke at Dunkin' Donuts. I went there and I met them, just to talk and hear what they had to say, the wisdom they wanted to share.
It needs to be maybe a little more of.
And when Anne and Ann were on the committee, remember, they actually set up as part of their, um, I think it came out of governance. They, they actually set up a whole protocol for what information, you know, would be useful to new members coming on board. And it was determined that the, um, chair would meet with each new member and kind of go through this list of stuff that they would need to know. Um but, you know, obviously that didn't sort of get it, isn't a sustained practice, right?
Well, I love Anne and Ann to death, but, but I didn't get that when I came on. I mean, we talked till, it was more of a, of, you know, we
Yeah, sharing.
Did talk and I'm sure and um you know, just off, like it when we were outside of this building, we would talk person to person, but we never really sat down and
So what as a committee, what would you, what what would you like, what would you envision if that were being done in the way that you
I mean, for me, having sort of just come on and and it was a little bit like diving off the deep end and and there was a good conversation, but there was questions that I didn't even know that I had to ask or for you to answer or, and then I know I met with you, Carol, and and you you handed me six binders of stuff and said, enjoy. And it's and it's a little bit like a lot of saying
That's a little bit of an overstatement.
You actually, we set up a meeting and you went through the binders with me.
Oh, I didn't get that.
It's been a busy year.
But I think the challenge is, there's there's a five inch manual of policies. You know, okay, that's for this policy, that's for that policy, kind of knowing what they are and how they work and
Yeah. But I do think that's very important is going through each policy, because I was surprised that a policy even existed for some things and I'm like, wow. Is obviously, I'm not gonna remember that, but you know, I do think it's important to go through and at least look at the table of contents in every lettered.
Try to become familiar with it.
Yeah, but we should, we should figure out what it is that you really would need and different people may need different things, but it, we could set up a process that could work.
You know, I think that one of the things that might have been nice, um is, I'm trying to think back, cause it was, it was so overwhelming to Even just an introductory to what are the, what are, what are the subcommittees? What does each subcommittee do? Rather than have, you know, so that when you walk into a meeting and that first time you sit down and you've gotta raise your hand to be on a committee and you've never even heard of these things before, what is?
I was just assigned to my committees, so.
There's uh, well, that's because of the way you came on to the, if you had been gone through the standard procedure, you'd have been sitting. And then you would have been told.
It was at my first, my first meeting, the second thing we talked about was Parker and Cass, which was a very
Yeah, 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 that's what Michael was thrown into then.
Like handing, you know, someone's elected and then they receive in the mail the minutes of last, the last previous year's meetings or the previous two meetings, just so that you know what the committee, this is what the committee has been doing, so.
But I I think it's, it'd be nice for a new member to, you know, always have a a talk with the the chair.
And, you know, there is so much material, just to, for maybe for you or we could discuss just a list of topics to be discussed, you know, not so much that we're
But just a a simple list of topics that that would be very helpful to anyone coming onto the committee for the first time.
And I would say if if we are looking at that summer
That would include what the committees are.
Yeah, and if if we're talking about that, doing that summer meeting, I think new members would be joining not just before that, but reasonably just before that, it might be a good opportunity to include some of it in there. You know, talking about what the big things of the year are, or what the big things of last year were.
Right, I mean, there's so much to, you know, like the open meeting law, I mean, people don't, you know.
You do receive a lot of that in writing, I mean, if you really take the time, but I think what's most helpful is to discuss it with someone. I mean, obviously, you need both, but, you know, just to
Context is important though.
I I think
Right, I mean, if you, it, like, many of you that are in your second term and previously people who, you know, have served multiple terms, at least since I've been here, they have felt that they really started to understand things in their second term. That it really took them a full three years to sorta, you know, know exactly how it really does work.
Yes, it takes that long.
They've served on multiple subcommittees by that point and, but context is a really important thing, you know, you don't, like Michael said, you don't know what you don't know. You've never experienced it.
Questions to ask, it's so new to you. There is a learning curve and you just, you know, wanna be able to take advantage of having climbed it to an extent.
But what we could do is we could do a little research and just, cause there was a list of topics and we could run them by you to determine that that's the list of topics that you think are the right list of topics.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
Have a new person.
Uh, no. He doesn't wanna give up his
She's gonna have to fight me for it.
So we, Laura, can we do that?
You want the newbie seat for us?
Exactly.
We'll check the list, check Ann and Ann's list.
Did anybody, did anybody else have anything that they wanted to, like that popped out at them that they felt, other otherwise, every, we had no disagreed, which is great, so. No, like on average.
Every year, I think we rate, the committee has a public relations plan for the school system and it's always rated a two, which is exactly the purpose of this communications plan that we're working on, which really brings together, we have a lot of, I've, I rated it two because I know we have all the policies in place that delineate that public relations plan, but it's, they're not all in one place. They're like four different policies. So we've got it, but I think it would be simpler if it could be in one plan so that it could be accessible, so that we could all rate this a one instead of a two.
So that's your goal, that's what you have as a goal?
Yes, that's definitely a goal I want to see accomplished.
Well, at least they're not all threes, right?
And I understand why they're they're twos, I I mean, because you really have to search out these different policies to realize that if you put them all together, it makes a coherent public relations plan, but if they're not together, then it's harder. But there's one other, I wanted to just Do other districts do this?
It really depends, Lorraine, um this, I think this survey comes from M A S C, you know, and some districts tweak it. It is actually required that you're supposed to do an annual evaluation, that's one of the things that's sort of required, but I I can say that when I was in, both in Greenfield and um and Quay, and Quaybog initially did not do it, but we we did begin doing it because it is
Right.
It it is something that um people found helpful, um so I guess it really depends on the committee. But I have to say, small committees, it's tougher because you have, you know, fewer people to be on subcommittees, this committee does a lot of work behind the scenes, I I don't think the public really knows that. Um, you know, the number of time, amount of time you spend in subcommittees and 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 working with colleagues on, you know, big stuff, um both during the day and in the evening, you know?
Right.
Um, in Quaybog, I had twelve people, so, you know, it was easier for them to distribute, right, you know, they might only have to be on one subcommittee. But here, you know, you're all on at least two, right?
There was just one question here that I was a little unsure about what they're exactly referring to.
Um, it's in the first, the first one, it says, committee regularly evaluates the progress
Under governance?
Relative to the goals and objectives that have been adopted, yes.
Are you under governance?
Uh, yeah, it's governance in the beginning, what does that mean to you?
I would think that that would mean what governance does is, you know, how in the beginning you would say, okay, you look at A, B, C, and D of the um of the binder, we would be assigned not just the ones that we were working on to either, you know, revise or but then you would also take it upon, take it upon the subcommittee member to be given so many um policies to review.
So you see this as evaluating the governance committee per se?
Yes. Well, yeah, that they're, that they're bringing forward if they feel that, okay, they they look at the the individual um policies and if there was something that they felt should be brought to the committee for a recheck.
Yeah, or you you decide as the governance subcommittee, what are the goals? What are, what are your goals, you have public relations, what are your goals in relationship to what the committee wants you to do, you're kind of working at the will of the committee, right? So if every subcommittee has a set of goals that they're working from, based on their directives from the committee as a whole, then you could, as you do every meeting, you say what, you know, what is the report from the each of the committees, that's a way of monitoring progress toward what you said you wanted to accomplish.
Subcommittee reports.
Yes.
I know when Annie and I were on it, we would take it, okay, you you take D, E, and F, and I'll do G, you know, and we would then talk about anything that that was brought up and a lot of times, we would talk it out and it wouldn't need to come to the committee.
The first few years, they actually had to go through the entire manual, because actually Mike Gilbert uh came and actually worked with the committee on, with that subcommittee, you know, went through policy by policy. And they, so over the course of a couple of years, the whole manual, so the goal was to completely revise, and then it was to get it online. Because we didn't used to have it online, so th- those were goals that the committee had set out to do, and then the subcommittee did the work and then reported back to the main committee.
But we're kind of in a continual cycle of of updating and reviewing policies all the time, we're just not moving as quickly as, and and maybe it's not necessary because everything has been reviewed relatively, right, not not so long ago.
But it just shouldn't be policies that happen to come up because something happened, like with Alana's situation, you know, like
That's that's part of it, that's part of it, I mean, policies that come up, it's part because of situations and also because of new legislation and also then there's a regular cycle of review.
Right, like you said, the law changes, the bullying, because, you know, pu- uh policy had to be changed, the concussion policy had to be changed. The discipline policies had to be changed.
And mask will let us know when that's necessary.
That's right, they do a good job of that.
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, did anything else come up to anybody? That was good, that made me feel good.
Yeah, it was great.
Um, okay, now we can discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Everybody has had an opportunity to sit down with the superintendent, um go over the paperwork. Um and then immerse yourself in the uh the seven pages of critiques, yeah, yes. But it wa- it was um a great experience for me, um it it um gives me a better understanding each year of how important um your job is. And it gives me a better understanding too of the unique way I think our district all works together between the administrators, the teachers, I mean, everybody that we have, I think it's, it's um a uh great tool to actually visit and see everything that goes into uh the day to day business dealings of a school, so.
Carol's job is so multifaceted, there's so many different areas of responsibility, it's a little mind boggling and she does an amazing job balancing and juggling and motivating and keeping everything on track, everyone on track.
So I I was gonna do it a little different um this time around. Um, I do have a spreadsheet, and we've often given a spreadsheet of um the evaluations, uh I wanted to just see if each of us wanted to just give a little bit, you know, little bit. However much you want to share as to what uh you brought out of the discussion with Carol, what, you know, any- anything that you feel strengths, weaknesses, um I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but just share a little tidbit of of um what you got.
I think for me, I'll start, somebody has to go first, um I think that the coming on and and just sort of getting my feet wet and figuring out everything over the course of the year, I think a lot of it was, what I appreciated was the fact that goals are set, I've I've done three sixty reviews kind of in the corporate world, goals are set at the middle of the year or at the end of the year, so you you achieve everything or you get an almost achieve everything and you look great, um but that's not really reality and and that's not a way to move from point A to point B, it's a way to sort of do whatever you want and then say, look at me, I had a good year. Um, so I think I really appreciated that aspect of it in in terms of the achieving the various goals from the beginning part. Um, my I think the area that I that I, and I've said it before, that I care them, that I think is the most challenging relates to the budget. Um, it did surprise me a little bit that that there is not a projection for the future, and I think it's an opportunity that we've talked about and um and I think we're moving in the right direction. But yeah, for me, it's hard to, it's hard to be able to understand the implications of this year's budget without knowing the implications of next year's budget. If we add the custodian this year, what does it mean for next year or for two years out, you know, and and there are variables, there are we don't know the numbers certainly, but not having any idea of what or where they are, I found to be really difficult in the process, but.
I know, I I know that's been brought up before too.
Yeah, I mean, we we definitely have, uh, like when Terry was here, we, you know, we we did do quite a bit of that, I think that the town was moving in that direction of looking at more um, you know, more long term uh plan for the budget. Um, we used to meet in our, my office, we used to call it the crystal ball meetings, you know, we sort of like, what what does this look like, maybe three years out, because you know, Georgetown, like many towns, it's, you know, they rely a lot on state, state aid, and as state aid changes, you know, it it does put the burden on the taxpayer. Um, so it it, you know, for a lot of reasons that you identified, it is a challenge, but it is certainly something. But I think it would be difficult to do it in the schools ex- you know, exclusive of the town, I'd really love to try to figure out a way to try to motivate the, not to say we can't do it on our own, but it would be really, I think, helpful if we could figure out a way to kinda get, kinda get everybody sort of, because, you know, we've been talking about, particularly in this budget process, the concern we have going forward is what is the town's plan? Right, so how how could we be part of, you know, thinking together with the town on that, cause I agree with you, it it's always a good idea to think, think forward.
I think especially when we're getting a signal from the town on what what potential, you know, what what the number is likely to be next year, you know, what the increase might look like, I think knowing, knowing in the context of next year's budget to be able to understand what it means for a year or two out, I I think is is huge, to be able to make a wise decision in the first place.
The only thing I would add is, just to build on what Michael said, I agree with everything you said related to the budget. Um, I I did feel as though the budget that was developed was thoughtful, I thought it was appropriate um based on what you were working within, I personally was frustrated at the presentation to the town. Um, I just thought
At the FinCon meeting, you're saying?
Yes, yeah, that's what I should have said, um I just didn't really feel there was a strong understanding of what the needs are and how important the budget is.
On the part of the
The FinCon, yeah, I felt like it was more, well, this is your number and and go work with it and everyone, everyone was looked at the same way. And and I I just didn't agree with that approach at all.
Are you thinking we we could have done something different with that or was it
Not really, I mean, the, I mean, what you presented couldn't have been more detailed, and the cover letter clearly outlined the needs. And I felt like it sort of went on deaf ears. Because I felt like there should have been some movement there, I mean, you go in with such a strong budget. Right, and all the detail to back it up. And you s- you, you know, you sort of got an acknowledgement, like, yeah, I get it, but sorry, bring the next group in.
Yeah.
To me, that isn't the way a budget works, that isn't really the way it should work. Um, but I I really, I personally did not see that as a a flaw on anything that you, Carol, did or Joan did or the, or the subcommittee, and and we're still learning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, personally, I mean, once again, come from the corporate world, I would have taken it to the town. I'm really not a political person. I'm not, you know, I don't really, that isn't my style, so I would have taken it to the town, I would have gone all the way, I think it's important. And what I found, what I find amazing is what we do with the curriculum, we, you and I talked about that probably at length. Um, on the budget that we have and the resources, I think we do an amazing job with our curriculum. And I think that's probably the most important. And we could probably be doing more if we had a few extra dollars. I also think we've had an amazing year in in general, just with the building project, the work in the curriculum, the turf field, I mean, it's it's heroic what's gone on this year, um and I feel like for the most part, you know, you always miss a beat here and there and little things that come up. But there's been great communication, I think, to the community. To me, there's good socialization of everything that's going on, if you wanna learn, you can learn, you just need to, you know, turn the TV on or attend. There's so many communications, so, you know, there's always room for improvement, but, you know, I think it's working well.
I really do.
I, is, so I should probably say that we um did give you a rating of proficient, which I think is great and I think it's very well deserved.
Thank you.
Um, I wanna reiterate what uh Lorraine said too, I think we've had an amazing year, like so much um growth. Um, you know, our schools are looking great, the um, the turf field, we've had a lot of big changes. And, you know, I I appreciate all the time that you put into it, um I appreciate the time that you uh remain on things that haven't necessarily happened yet, like the maintenance, um the possibility of a of a shared maintenance, I think the possibility of a, of a shared maintenance, I think that's great that you have continued to do that. Uh, I hope someday we will see it actually happen, um, but it wouldn't be without your, your diligence in doing it. The Penbrook transition, I think, is going very well, I think Margaret's done a great job under your leadership. I think the communication, I, I do think it really can't be any better. I know that there's so much angst though for parents, so I totally see where they're coming from because I'm not at that level, but I'd probably be just as concerned, but.
Understandable.
Uh, when the questions are brought up, you have both, I think, done a great job in making sure that you give the parents the, they need to have confidence in both of you. Um, and I think that that's something that they're, they're definitely seeing that they're, they're gaining that. Um, and it's just because we're, we need to be transparent, there, there can't be any, you know, any feelings that we're trying to keep things from, from parents, it's, it's just a, a long process. I mean, this new building is huge, it's new, it's a, we don't wanna go in, uh, without the, doing the right thing. And I think getting information too early out there could be detrimental.
Especially if it's not the right.
So I think the way that it has been rolled out has been great. Um, the, um, public relations, uh, I think has come a long way. So I think that's great, I still would like to see a TV show.
I know though.
I, I do think that, and I think highlighting the students, cause that's what we talked about, we talked about like, you know, asking these students, you know, what, what experience can you tell people out there watching that you have had in the school? And talk about the teachers, talk about the administrators, talk about the sports and all the extra things that they get out of Georgetown. I think would be, um, a great thing.
Yep.
Um, I think it's, I think it's great that we're working with the town to, um, utilize Pearlie as a senior center. I appreciate, uh, all the meetings that you've had to accommodate that, I know that that's not.
It's gonna be great.
It is gonna be great, um, so I appreciate that, I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, one day I'll be playing cards there.
Or Bananagrams with me.
Maybe, I don't know what it would be.
It's really easy to learn.
Maybe running on the treadmill next to you.
I do an exercise class with you, Bobby.
Um, and I just, I, I do think the, um, the people that the superintendent surrounds themselves with, not just the administration, which I think, you know, you guys are great, but, um, the teachers, the substitute teachers that you take the time to actually interview, and I think that that's, that's really great. And it's just a way of showing everybody that you really care about the instruction that our kids are receiving, so.
Thank you, Bobby.
I thought that was, it wa- it was an enjoyable time for me. Sorry Laura that it took me so long to get it. I was the weak link.
She's okay with that.
I was the weak link.
You got it done.
It always gets done.
It always gets done.
Anybody else?
Sure, yes, yes, um, you know, Carol, I, I'm just, I'm so grateful that you're, you're here with us and your, your vision of just so many different areas, you know, you, you're the one that understands so well all the different pieces of the puzzle and how they come together. And it's, you know, it is hard to communicate to people when they're focused on one little piece, how that one little piece connects to all, you know, all the other ones. But you, you have an incredible vision that really aligns well with our, our district mission and our strategic goals. And I, I, you know, there's been so much on your plate this year. You, you know, you've maintained a strong focus on the curriculum, uh, and to engage teachers to develop meaningful teaching practices. Um, we've got the, the Penbrook transition, which is, is all over the place, there's so much to it. And it's very exciting, wonderful things happening, but there's so many different levels to it. Um, a challenging budgetary year, uh, I really, you know, I too, I, I would love to have long, long-term vision and long-term planning. And I think this is something that Carol has been really promoting to all, to our different, to every different town boards as well as, you know, us as school committee members. And it's, it's difficult to do when, you know, not only do you have the, the state finances and, and the state funding changing, but, you know, to me, the big driver of, of a lot of issues right now has been insurance prices and costs and, health insurance, and what a shock that was, I mean, that was, there's, you know, major factors that are very difficult to, to predict but get in the way, but that doesn't mean it's not worth doing the very best you can to, to make that long-term plan. And I totally agree, it's, it's, we need to do it on town level as well as the school level. Um, and we have, we've been trying. You know, putting into place the, the RTI program, I mean, that is, that just engages, that also connects to the technology, the changes in technology and the software and the professional development and so many different pieces to it, but it's very, very important to support our struggling students. I mean, we're here to teach all students, students on, you know, with disabilities and, and on special education plans as well as those who struggle a lot, but don't, you know, or, or don't qualify for that, as well as our, our talented, our gifted, our, our, you know, all of our students. Um, and that's what an RTI program can, can really do as soon as, uh, any kind of struggle is, is identified. And we, you know, we're making good progress on that. Um, yeah, your vision for how the Pearlie School can become a significant asset to the town is also multifaceted. There are many, you know, daycare faculty and, um, you know, expanding the preschool, um, and this bringing in the senior center, it's really important, it's a beautiful, this community, we have a lot of, a lot of needs and a beautiful old classic building. You know, I've always said, it's not that all, all old buildings need to be torn down, some of them are treasures. And the Pearlie is an absolute architectural, historical treasure. And to make the very most of it for our town to, to meet the needs of all citizens is a wonderful, wonderful thing. That's a very, and you're doing excellent with it. Um, you know, we have the new educator evaluation protocols, you're negotiating a new teacher union contract, which is, um, you know, very complicated and, uh, important, and I know that's very time-consuming as well. So I'm just, you know, I'm very impressed on many, many levels. I just wanna read, um, one little page that I wrote, kind of an overall, um, summary. High standards fostering effective interactions, communication skills, building and sharing educational vision, and managing conflict at every level are all exceptional talents Carol Jacobs brings to our district. Carol is, is a creative and inspirational leader with a get-it-done attitude and aptitude to work well in a fast-paced environment. Not only does Carol empower our school administrative and teacher teams while building morale, but she also works incredibly well with town boards and committees, sharing her energy and passion with our entire community. So I just thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good job. It's, comes naturally, we're. Carol, just, is a wonderful asset to our district and I appreciate that.
It's a great place to work. I just wanted to, who's wrong? Um, and I, I just wanted to say too, under, um, family and community, um, since I've been on the committee, you have, um, always scored very well in that because of, um, the commitment that you do have to the success of our town. And, uh, you know, the fact that pretty much every event, I think that I've gone to, you've been there and, um, I think it means, it, it, it means so much, like the kids will, the kids will even notice, like if you come in, you know, they, they just.
They, they know her, right.
And, and they do all share like a.
They wanna talk with her.
Yeah, they feel comfortable, I know my, my children feel very comfortable, you know, talking with you. And I think that's important because I know as a, when I was a kid, the principal, uh, was, was untouchable and the superintendent, forget it.
I was terrified of the principal, I never even saw the superintendent. It's like, this is, you know.
Right, Peter does a good way though of, of not having that intimidation like it was when we were kids.
You haven't seen that scowl?
Yeah, I haven't seen that, I.
Kidding.
If you do that to the kids, maybe it will work. Um, but that is, that has always been, um, a high point, and that's, that's important.
Well, I think.
Because you're open to a policy.
I think if you're a superintendent, you, 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 you're trying to reflect the values of the community, right? And match is really important, you don't wanna be in a community that you don't share the, the values or you, you can't, you don't feel you can make a contribution. Um, you know, my, every day my thinking is pushed in ways that, you know, I have to say that's a good thing. Um, but I also hope that I can help push other people's thinking, you know? But if, if some, if a community didn't want the kind of leadership I offer, it, you, it wouldn't be successful. So I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with who I get to work with, yourselves as well as my administrative team. I mean, actually, ev- every, I've hired everybody except Peter, right? Peter's, Peter's the one who's the history here, eleven, twelve years, I think, right? Twelve years, and I've been here eight. Um, and, uh, you know, I mean, there's something really wonderful about.
Ten days to a week.
I don't know if he's gonna count down that much. But, you know, Peter and I will probably end our careers here, you know, and, and, uh, you know, I think there, one of the advantages is the, when you have people for a long, a little bit of longevity, you know, you can build on things. You know, change is great, but it, it's not great when it's, you know, all the time. So I, I think, you know, I'm very grateful, you know, somebody once told me, you know, surround yourself with people that may be smarter than you, that, you know, bring something important to the table and, you know, I can say for every one of the people I have a chance to work with closely, that's absolutely the case. Um, you know, and to me, it, you can't do anything in this work by yourself, you know? Um, yes, you, you know, you, there are some decisions that are yours and you have to make them. And maybe not everybody's gonna like them, but you should at least be able to explain why you're making them and how they connect to other things. So, um, you know, I, I'm grateful for my, for my time here, I think we've got a lot to continue to do together. Um, but I, I honestly have to say that, you know, we have all of these great conditions within the schools to work with. We have great teachers, we have awesome kids, you know, um, and we have a community that does support education. Everybody might disagree, not agree on exactly what that looks like, but when we have needed what we've needed. I mean, the story here is that some amazing things have happened with not a lot of money. Um, but when we needed an override, we did get an override in the worst economy that's happened. You know, the Penbrook School, forty-seven million dollar building and eight million dollar, you know, renovation, you know, CPC money that comes out of the pockets of the taxpayers for turf field. Um, you know, and other than not, and that's just the schools, you know, there's also been infrastructure and other buildings in town. Um, so, you know, I, I think it's a community that's, you know, growing and changing and, you know, it has its own unique qualities. But I have found that the partnerships that I know for myself that have allowed me to do some of the things that I, that I can do here, I couldn't do without the people that, you know, are in those positions. So again, always things to do and I'm grateful for your comments, I'm grateful for the, you know, the feedback that you gave me on the individual evaluations. I want you to know I do take them very much to heart. Um, and, uh, look forward to continuing to develop, you know, more goals together with you and, and moving, continuing to move in the right direction. So, thank you, thank you very much for your, your thoughtful comments and feedback.
And I do, I, I do think it, it's worth, um, bringing up too, that the evaluations doing, say that same thing, that the people you surround yourself, the administrative team, um, it, it, they definitely, you definitely complement each other.
Yeah, well, I, I certainly am grateful for the opportunity. They make me better.
And can I just make one little comment? Because you were, you, you had mentioned the idea of getting students together to do a, a video type of thing.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that is part of the, the plan for the new website as we go forward, is to do a, like a Y. A Y Georgetown High School and have that.
And you're gonna have kids come on and.
Yeah, the kids would do it.
The kids are gonna do a video, so.
We've seen a couple of good models.
You'll see, a lot of what you were talking about is gonna be, is gonna be happening with the new website, so.
That's great.
An ever-evolving.
We've, we've talked about the same things.
Can't wait to hear about it.
These things are ever-evolving, right, they, they are. And, you know, I was talking to somebody today, I don't know who I was talking to about this, but we were talking about how many, you know, how there's always things to do. And I said, you know, a very wise person once said to me that life is a journey, not a race. And, you know, I think sometimes that's the hardest thing is to be able to determine which things have to happen when, even though we want everything to happen now. Because, you know, initiation's very different than implementation, that's a very different process. And different conditions have to be set up and support networks and, so, you know, that's, it, it, we're on this journey. Oh, I know, I was talking to John Pingree, cause we were talking about, you know, finishing off the turf field and the scoreboard. I said, John, remember, cause he had a little snafu with the scoreboard, we're on a journey, John, we're not racing. It's gonna be awesome when it's done, and it will be awesome when it's done, um.
Yeah, this, he's been in this project for so long, like, I, I can understand.
We can't control the water table, however. When you dig a hole and the water gushes into it, you can't put a scoreboard in. Until the water table goes down.
Okay, I don't wanna hear about it yet.
So.
But it's gonna go in at some point.
It's all good, it's gonna be amazing.
You're right.
But what's gonna happen when the water table rises again, will there be?
No, 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 it's good, because you have to put the, you know, you have to cement it in, right?
That's what engineers are for.
And you have to go down many feet.
Your son can help us with that.
Well, someday, we have to go down many feet and when you get down four feet and it starts gushing, you can't go too much further, so, anyway.
It'll be fine.
It'll be fine, it'll be awesome.
Does anybody else wanna add anything else? Thank you so much. Okay, um, we have to vote on both individually. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school committee self-evaluation as presented.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, chair will entertain a motion to accept the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen superintendent's evaluation as presented.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can move along to school choice.
So it is that time of year again. Um, as I explained, uh, a little bit in the orange notes, the budget assumes that we're adding five to do with the budget. Um, and then I, I gave you some, some information, um, here. Um, you know, uh, Peter, Peter believes that we could take more, um, more ninth graders. Um, I just, he, he gave me some of this information, so I made sure I put it in the orange notes cause people are always curious, you know, how many people are leaving and for what reason and.
But are these numbers that you gave us, are they pretty much now like we know? How many are leaving, could there be?
Well, people could.
They're not, they're not solid yet, I would say.
When do people, when is like?
But I mean, like all the official letters have gone out saying they've been accepted, right?
Yeah, but honestly, we chased them all summer.
Really, to like confirm?
Yeah.
Because otherwise you're trying to figure out numbers and scheduling.
So these numbers are the ones that you definitively know?
Uh, yeah, that, I, that's, um, those numbers come from asking the kids and the kids responding.
Okay, cause they don't have to tell you.
But sometimes they change their minds.
Sure.
Or some parents might, you know, be waiting for multiples and then decide whether they can or cannot afford it or, you know, there's lots of things that can happen. But this, these are as, as it exists now that you know, not necessarily.
We don't know about Essex Aggie yet, so it could be.
That's right, Essex Aggie, uh, he's, how many?
Potentially three.
Yeah.
Is that included in the ten, in this, um?
No.
The nine that we're going?
Those are Woodya.
Those are Woodya.
Right, okay, so then there's three more.
Essex Aggie hasn't, um, uh, told us yet, told the kids yet, they've got in as of a couple of days ago.
And I think there are, I think when we did this in the budget, I think there were four that we already have at Essex Aggie. And then this would be another three, so this, three more students would be another sixty thousand dollars to the town, to the cost of the town because they get twenty thousand dollars per student. So it is important that they, that these vocational schools let us know because otherwise, this is one of the, Mike Farrell's biggest frustrations is he doesn't know in a timely fashion, and then all of a sudden he gets a hundred thousand dollar, you know, bill and says, what? And then he finds out there were six or seven more kids that, you know, that committed. So I, I think it, I, I think kindergarten, you know, is always a question, you know, I know we have some folks who've already asked us about it. Um, but until we. Um, but until we really know the numbers, we we tend to suggest to you that, you know, we wait till August, even though we know that that's challenging for people. So usually they'll register in their own town and then if something comes up and they can, you know, so they have to have a backup plan. But, um, right now, the the numbers in kindergarten, I I showed you the average. But I I think again, when we balance things, the good news, I guess, I'll qualify it, I'll qualify it as maybe good news, is in the house budget, they restored eighteen million dollars in the kindergarten grant money.
I was just going to ask you about that.
As opposed to, was a twenty-one million dollar initiative to fund it at the level they cut it. But they're saying that they're recommending restoring, I think it was eighteen point two, um, million dollars back. So one might argue that possibility of us getting some portion of what we had had in the past, um,
That would be good. That would be important.
And now it's in the Senate and then it'll go through conference, so, you know, we don't know, like, whether the Senate will keep it there. Um, but, you know, they're still struggling to get a balanced budget, so I don't know what that's going to look like at the end. But I I raise it because we did reduce, remember, we reduced two of, two, uh, paraprofessionals. Um, who, by the way, based on movement, you know, are likely to have a position. You know, if it's not in kindergarten, they're likely to have a position, so it doesn't look like, you know, anyone in that situation's going to going to not be having a job, but.
Oh, that's good. That's great.
But obviously, if we got some of that money back, we'd probably want to reinstate, you know, the 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 people that are there now and have been well-trained to do it. So it really, you know, it really is up to the committee as to whether or not we want to advertise. We know we have to do five. Um, Peter, you had said ten? Okay, so, I mean, that's a possibility, ten. And then, um, kindergarten, otherwise, I don't think we're recommending it any other grades based on our enrollment. Um, the numbers just aren't, uh, favorable necessarily to do that. Um, could you fit one or two here and there? Maybe, but it, we we just think the most important thing right now is the priorities need to be. We're building a new school. We, we don't want to add students and increase class sizes. They're in the average range right now. We feel comfortable with that. Like I said, in kindergarten, you know, we just don't know what the numbers are going to look like, you know, like going forward and and, uh, mid-high school, because you have a transition anyway. And, um, you know, you you know, you lose some kids to vocational, private and others, you know. Based on the enrollment Peter's recommending, you know, up to ten, if we want to go there, but we know we need five.
But you're recommending to delay this vote.
No, I don't think you, I don't think you should delay, I, the kindergarten vote, I would not open. I would not open any slots right now for kindergarten.
Okay.
Would you concur with that, Margaret?
Absolutely, because we are getting more registrations.
Yeah, right, and that that happens, you know, sometimes up until the middle of the summer, right?
Is there, what's, is there a, like, a, I know it's not a deadline, but a, a time when you, when sort of everyone is advertising school choice spots?
Yes, it's right, it's now. It's, 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 um, you know, May, uh, usually June first, you notify the state, you know, if you're going to accept school choice students and at what grade.
Okay.
Um, and then we have the option to open up additional slots in December, should we wish to. We don't tend to do that. Um, because it, you know, that, that's to accommodate, like, kids who want to come in the second semester. You you know, but, you know, that's, that's really tough to do in the middle of the year, unless there's a really good reason to do it. Um, so, like I said, I guess what we'd be asking you to vote, to support is, uh, five, five ninth grade or ten ninth grade, basically, that's, or if you want to pick a number in between. But up, up to, or no more than ten, however you want to do it. Um, we get roughly five thousand dollars comes in per, um, per child. Um, that isn't the ten thousand that they consider, you know, the the cost per pupil, but it's how the formula works.
But so, current eighth grade has a hundred and twelve students, ten students are planning to attend private and nine students may be attending vocational.
Mm-hmm, and like I said, that could be fluid, that, you know.
Hmm. Um, then to add ten back in, so you're looking at like a hundred and three.
Yeah.
That's not a bad number, you know?
I just always think that that age is so tough
It is.
to add, to add in. Peter, what's your, what's your thoughts on that? I just think it's a, it's, um, you wonder.
It's the social.
You wonder why they're looking to go somewhere else at that age in ninth grade, it just.
But they're starting high school.
Yeah, it, I, I think it's, if you're going to move, that's the time to come.
Yeah.
You know, and and we, it's tougher in the sophomore year.
We have opened tenth grade slots in the past and it has been harder to do now.
But it's, it's a big transition into, you know, coming from middle school to high school. And as you know, uh, kids choose different things. Some kids want to have a vocational education. Some kids want to go to a private school and some kids want to go to the twenty-fifth best school in the state.
Right, right, exactly. Why wouldn't they? Okay, I just, I I just, um, I don't, that's always been my concern, just what is, uh, what is come, what is that individual bringing into the community? That's, that's just, at that age, it just, to me, it just seems like a tough age.
Yeah, I agree, actually. I think the numbers work. I don't think it's about the numbers, but it's, you know. Are there any issues? Are there any concerns? How will they adjust?
Mm-hmm.
Does it end up being more disruptive?
I know, and that isn't something that you can ask.
No, no.
And if, you know, it, I mean, you can't ask even any, like, why, you know, you choose it to leave. It's just like if that, you fall in, um, you're within that ten, then you you automatically get it.
That's, I mean, there's always, there's always uncertainty.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Hmm.
People move into town, people leave town, I mean.
Like, I know there's a, a family that, there's, uh, that has a child who's already school choice. And, uh, he's been asking me about, he has three other children, uh, one elementary and then two, they're going into ninth grade. And so, you know, he's very interested in the fact that there's ninth grade openings, even though he understands his elementary child would not be able to come. He would have preference because there's already a school choice student here. Um, that's within the law. Um, he wouldn't, if we did have to do a lottery, his children wouldn't have to go into the lottery because of what I just said, so. Um, yeah, I mean, sometimes you get more than enough and sometimes you don't get the same number, as Barbie's pointing out.
Hmm.
Yeah. So really, I mean, it's really a matter of, you know, do I take the conservative approach and do five or do you, do you want to, um, do you want to take ten?
Okay, well.
Because it really isn't a serious amount of money. It's fifty thousand dollars when you're done. Right, I mean, it's not that that's not money, but
Right.
it's not, and we did have to make cuts, so I mean, anything that we can bring in is good. But you don't want it to be that, you don't want that to be your reason necessarily.
No. Could you estimate our success rate of transitioning ninth grade is in?
Well.
Um, what is?
She's wondering about the success rate of transitioning ninth graders in.
Success with regard to graduating and, I mean, we've had.
Fitting in.
Academics, sociology, everything I guess.
One of the great, um, things about our school and our community is how everyone welcomes kids from other communities and they treat them as if they live here. Um, we've had valedictorian that was a choice student. Um, we've, uh, I think there's a lot of benefits to that and I think it's, it's a very successful program. I'm a big supporter of it.
Hmm, yeah, I mean, it's like anything else, right? It it depends on exactly, you know, what the circumstances are. Um, but I will say that because it is a choice, right, parents have to make a commitment to getting the child there. You know, it's a lot easier to send your child to the, your typical, your regular town school district, especially if they can get there pretty easily or take the bus. You have, you are making a commitment, you know, when you're a, when you're a school choice family. Um, and, you know, you've seen the 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 data, you you know where the kids primarily come from. And, um, you know, I know when I was in, uh, Quabog, Southbridge was the school district that was almost going into receivership. And, um, the kids who came from Southbridge are, were the kids who really, whose parents really wanted to be sure that they got a high-quality education. They were worried about what was going to be offered because the situation was a little tough in Southbridge at the time. So it was kind of like the cream of the crop, even though they came from a a much, a much different town structure. Um, so I think we get a balance there, right? We we do get some students who maybe aren't as hi- high academics as some of the Georgetown kids, at least initially. Um, and then, again, we get some people that, as Peter said, one was the valedictorian. So it 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 is like, you you can't guarantee, it's not like you can look at the applications and pick the ones you want.
Right, right.
That isn't how school choice works.
Okay, well, I appreciate, um, Peter's point of view, obviously, because it's going to be in your school.
Your school, yeah.
And if you feel confident that.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look historically, over the years, at least since I've been here, we we average about ten, ten freshmen a year and that number seems to work, um, for us, so.
Good. Okay, I I'm going to, um, throw it out there then.
Mm-hmm.
The chair will entertain a motion to open ten school choice slots at the ninth grade level for the twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, I do want to say at this point, because I think we're done with our agenda.
We are.
Um, that, um, it is Alana's last meeting with us after three years. Um, and I just want to thank you for everything that you've brought to the committee. I think you've done a great job. And I appreciate all the times that you've spoken up and I, I really respect your opinion. Um, I will miss you.
Thank you, Barbie.
We will.
We'll all miss you.
It was a great experience.
And I wish your daughter the best.
Absolutely.
But we have a little gift for you from all of us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. No, but we wish you well, but I'm sure we'll be seeing you around town.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And I'm sure you won't, um, you know, you'll stay just as involved, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
We hope so. We hope so. But I know it's, it's a lot of time, commitment and with the age of your, your daughter, I'm sure it's, it's tough on her.
You should see the tux.
No, I know.
I know. I know.
Even my, my kids at the age, they want to too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But we wish you the best.
It is, and you've done a great job.
Yes.
We appreciate that. I know it's, it's a lot of work for, for everybody and it's just, I don't think people realize just how much it is until you actually get on the committee and you, and you see it, but, you know.
It's time well spent. It's been worth it.
Good.
Well, we wish you the best.
Yes, I applaud you.
Um, okay, at this point, um, we, we do have executive session.
Yeah.
Um, so we will adjourn the meeting at nine oh six, but we will be going into executive session, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph three, for negotiation purposes, and we will not be returning to, uh, TV. Roll.
Yes.
Call vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Great.